The first item on the agenda is public comments on agenda items only. A total of thirty minutes is set aside for public comment at the beginning and at the end of the meeting. The maximum time allowed for any one speaker is three minutes. Public comments at the beginning of the meeting are limited to items on the agenda. Persons who wish to participate in the public comment portion of the meeting must state their name and a specific topic about which they wish to speak. As speakers must limit comments to issues appropriate for public discussion, complaints about student discipline, specific student issues, or personnel must not be addressed during public comment. If you have a, you know, a personal concern, the school board members and the administrative staff are available after the meeting and would be happy if you came up and talked with us about that. Also, if you would have a concern and don't feel you really want to get up to the microphone, the central administration staff and the school board is all very happy to receive emails or telephone calls from you. The contact information is on the district website. Public comments?
Hi there. My name is Tom Pumpler. I want to talk about item ten, and I want to link it to my little bit of story here. So, item ten basically is this board having to the rights to speak for somebody who's on a committee to take away the vote. Um, I'm on a committee, and I'm, and I'm a little pissed, I'll be honest with you. Um, I'm a little pissed at this board, members of the board, board that's been here for a long time, board members don't show up. Um, I, I really think it's important that the people get to have their say, and I think it's your, your job as board members to listen to what I have to say. And I believe that being on a committee is important. I volunteer my time, I volunteer my, my opinion. Um, I have no, no teaching experience, I'm a business person, um, I have better things to do with my time than to be here today. And I really think that I'm a little disappointed in this board, and I'll be truthful, I think that you guys are trying to take over the world here, in my opinion. You want to make decisions based on what you think is right. I, I told you, I have an agenda to be here, and that's to tell you how I feel. I'm not sure what each one of you guys have for an agenda. I mean, I've, I've written emails to Ms. Rubin, I've written emails to you, Ms. Peg, and, and what's very frustrating to me as a, as a parent of kids in this school district and as a person who gives a crap, I'm feeling that by you taking away my right to be part of the committee, why are you going to involve myself? And, and it's just, it's brutal, foolish. I mean, why are all you guys on this board? What is your, what is your objective? To me, I have no idea. You get elected, you think you're going to do the right thing, but honestly, you all have your own agenda. I mean, our agenda should be the kids, safety number one, education number two. I, I don't believe that's true. I believe you guys have your own period. I mean, just because as a community member and as a parent on a committee, my say should be heard just like anybody else's. And if you want to take that away from me, that's fine, but I'll tell you what, it, it's, it's, it's not going to be pretty in the future here. We're going to be like other school districts where, where the parents don't get involved, the parents don't care, and I really believe that you guys think you're have autonomy, and I'm really disappointed in this board. I'm disappointed in this board, new members, I discount you, I'm disappointed in previous boards, because you all had a stupid agenda, and it doesn't align with what's going on here with people, you know? And today was my kid's first day of school. My kids were on that new change in feeder pattern, right? Let me tell you real quick, my kids met their teacher last day of school, my kids, uh, met their teacher special, I mean, a special, Ms. Vasquez, my kids meet her. My kids have had three different teachers assigned to them. I've had two different suppliers. So, to me, you guys are supposed to be representing me, but you don't. I think you represent your own interests. My, my kids are supposed to be in a classes that have smaller kid sizes, right? Right? They're in, they're in larger classes now at Myers than they are at, than they would have been at the previous school, Frank Hoff, and I think that's crap.
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent and Communitarian, my name is Ed Slowshower Town of East Fischkill. Agenda item: When will the public receive answers to their questions at board meetings? I have seen no agenda item to address this resolution that was passed by the board. There were recently two Poughkeepsie Journal articles, one pertaining to a failed audit for fuel consumption and the other on students who are unprepared for college. We seem to have quickly prepared a corrective action plan for the fuel consumption, but yet the board has failed to put a corrective action plan in place for the fifty-three percent of graduating students from this district who are not college ready. We will discuss more of that later. Agenda item six point oh one: I have read Mr. Donapoli's report and the district responses. All I can say to this is that when I delivered pizza in a pizza van many moons ago, the owner back then was better equipped to track mileage and fuel consumption. Where are the internal controls on this process? Can you assure the community that our tax dollars were not wasted? You said the district immediately reviewed this situation and found that there was no theft or fraud. What was your review process? What did you find that was different from the audit team since the transaction, uh, transaction reports and data were the same? Who is at fault for this failed audit and what are the consequences for that person or individuals? Agenda item seven point oh three: We hired a PR person for a hundred and nine thousand dollars without any PR experience as far as I have researched. What is the scope of her responsibilities and purpose? During strategic planning, my team, Team Five, discussed a PR person for the district. Our discussions were for a part-time volunteer from the community, perhaps a retired person with PR experience who had ties to the community and the school district. We also discussed how this job could be accomplished internally with no additional cost to the taxpayers. What happened? Also, where is this money coming from to pay for this position? Can you tell me where this is approved in the approved budget that I have been unable to locate? Agenda item eight oh one, eight oh two: As I mentioned in the last meeting, we do not have ten thousand dollars to spend on this. This is a waste of money. I can tell you what policies you need to adhere to and what work. Please read the policies and then follow them. Agenda item ten oh one: So this is your solution because of the issues you had with the district facilities committee. This potential new policy shows the complete opposite of what is stated. This is a complete and utter disregard for the views and concerns of the public for which you serve. We all know that the board has final say on everything. Try reading policy one thousand, twelve, ten, twenty-two, fifty, twenty-two, sixty from the district policy manager. This terminology already exists, but our opinion and votes count when we participate in the committee. Agenda item eleven oh one: Any board members ever, excuse me, are board members ever going to add any items for discussion that truly need to be discussed and reviewed? Rarely if ever have I seen a board member add items for discussion. What is it that you do between meetings? There is nothing that you feel should be discussed, especially with all the issues that are facing the students and taxpayers?
Anyone else wish to give a comment? All right, then we'll move to board comments. Mr. Rubin?
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure this works. Okay. I'm impressed with the microphones. Uh, I would like to say that I took the opportunity along with several of my colleagues here, Ms. Karat and Ms. Keller, to go around and visit various schools. I was impressed what I saw, what has been done over the summer. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done, but I thought that what has gone on, uh, during those school visits really reflected well on the custodial staff, the teachers in rooms I could see that had windows, excuse me, they all have windows, new windows. And it was just a great reflection from what I could see of the staff that was there, and the custodial staff especially, because they went through, they jumped the boots, so. I went back a few days later and visited, revisited several of the schools. I visited, uh, Ketchum, which I'll get, John Jay, Van White Junior High School in Ketchum. There were significant changes over those three, in the three days that I went back there. The only thing that I would have to say, and Mr. Carrion, I spoke to you about this briefly just before, the football scoreboard at, at John Jay High School, the football scoreboard physically has been, Mr. Gross, has been a tremendous improvement over what was there last year. Uh, last year there was a question of vandalism in the sign, that's been addressed, but folks have sent to me through Facebook, um, the lighting, half of the lights on that scoreboard do not work. I consider that an embarrassment for the school, an embarrassment for the teachers, the students that are playing, excuse me, as well as for this whole district. And I would like to see some action taken to get those lights working, if possible, before the next game. And by the way, are those games posted? Have you had an opportunity to see whether the order, uh, sports schedule was posted? Somebody said that as of middle of last week it wasn't, so if it's not, I would like to make sure that it is there. But the scoreboard is, it might as well, if it's half worked, it's a disaster.
Mr. Self? Mrs. Karat?
Yes, I would just like to say that I was very impressed. I had never, as, as most parents in a district, wherever you decide to buy your house, it's the schools that you become the most familiar with, and it was the first opportunity that I had to be able to go to every single elementary school. We did the bulk of the elementary schools the first day, and then to do the two junior highs and the two highs, the three high schools. And it's, it's, uh, you don't really understand the extent of this district until you take the time to actually visit each one, and they are all open to the public. Um, and, uh, you know, I do encourage our residents to really take the time to come into those parking lots and look at what's going on and look at the amount of, of dedication of the staff, the amount of work that has to go into a summer of preparing, um, projects that are going to get done in, in those number of weeks, and the punch lists that have to be completed before today. And it was, I was speechless, that, the amount of, of dedication that we have with our staff. So I just wanted to, to add to what you started off with. You don't understand until you go to every single school and see, you know, how much people really truly care that are hired in this district.
Yes, I would just like to echo that, because to look at the schools, and last year was my first year on the board, and we went around and there were so many things that needed to be done in the buildings and grounds, and it was, it was really sad because it was almost overwhelming. And Mr. Gross and his staff have worked so hard this year and over the summer, and then to go in and see these beautiful shining buildings, and there is still work to be done, and definitely on the grounds outside of the parking lots and driveways in many cases, on some of the athletic facilities, and a number of other things need to be done. But so much has been done, it's, it's wonderful. And, uh, Mr. Gross was telling us how his staff is so good, they learned how to do boom jobs this summer, so we could do more things and not have to pay for outside contractors, which was great. Uh, I would like to say that, um, there was some mention of one of the articles in the Poughkeepsie Journal, and I would like to share, I had planned on sharing it with you anyway, and in the report, "Majority of Hudson Valley Students Unprepared for College", all right, okay. Barbara Graff, Research and Communications Coordinator at Pattern for Progress, singled out the Wapahatchee Central School District as the lowest spender in Dutchess County per pupil, and yet above average in their college and career readiness rate at forty-seven percent. Her quotation is, "It's one of those places that stood out to us in terms of getting a good return on public investment," Graff said. They have a big district, almost twelve thousand students, but they don't spend a lot of money getting those great results. And that's thanks to our staff, to Kristen Crandall, our business manager, and the many other people, Ron Gross for building the grants, Kim Catalano for transportation, Mr. Carrion and Dr. Baum for their, for their, uh, teaching personnel and the instruction. And we try, and certainly forty-seven percent isn't, isn't where we're stopping. We certainly want to continue to improve in the district, and that's what our entire staff is focused on. Thank you. Mr. Carrion?
Thank you, Madam President, Board of Education. Good evening, everyone. If I seem a bit tired, it's because we're all exhausted. It's par for the course. Um, we were having a conversation this hard with an high trustee, Armin, and the night before school opens, there's not an administrator who really gets a good night's sleep. Um, all you're really thinking about is making sure that opening day is smooth, that those students get to school safely and get home safely. What I can tell you is that the entire central office staff team, which you see sitting in front of me, spent their entire day visiting schools, um, as you heard trustee Karat indicate that this is a big school district, and in order to really get to all the schools, we really had to split up. Paid attention to the faces, the smiling faces of students that were coming off the bus, the administrators and the teachers that were standing in front of the buildings greeting the students, and, um, it really was a positive morning and a positive dismissal. And throughout the day, we didn't experience any mishaps for a first day of school. Tomorrow is another nerve-wracking day, because tomorrow kindergarten students start full day, and that really is a difference when they're there for the full day, their first full day in kindergarten. But we wish them all the best. Hopefully, they should be asleep by now or get into sleep real soon. And in addition to that, um, we do want to provide the board and the public with a, um, a formal presentation about the K through six configuration in terms of what our school numbers look like, what our class sections look like, where we are in kindergarten, where we are in first grade. For example, um, counting the data from last year, we had, I believe, twelve classes, don't quote me, anyone please, because I don't have the information right with me, but I believe there was about twelve classes or thirteen classes that had twenty-eight and twenty-nine students in their classes. Right now, we have two anomalies of that, but at the same time, they're co-integrated classes, where there's two teachers in the classroom, and possibility according with a teacher contract that they may require a teaching assistant if, um, the numbers do grow. And that's not due to K through six configuration, this is what happens here at the Wapahatchee Central School District year after year. Um, I'd like to say that Dr. Shucap is here, and it was really hot out there while you were controlling that traffic, and I, it was a smooth dismissal at Van White Middle School. And Mr. Thompson, I'm sure you did as well, because you have a new transportation.
Little Mary Morning.
Okay. So, for both middle schools, some of their routing has changed, um, and, um, really fine job. Thank you very much to central office staff, and especially to the principals, the principals were all excited and energetic, and the teachers, and just being around to see the students coming into the buildings and having a really positive attitude was really refreshing. So we're off to a great start, and as I said before, tomorrow's our full day with kindergarten students. Well, that's part of the report. Uh, at Fischkill Elementary School, there are no classrooms in the modulars, um, and we, the lower level, um, looks great. Those of you who had the opportunity to see the lower level, the R teachers extremely pleased with the new space, and, uh, we will provide much more information in terms of the changes that have taken place and, uh, what, what will continue to happen as we move forward this school year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, next, the corrective act, the corrective action plan presented by Mr. Carrion and Kristen Crandall, School Business Manager.
Good evening. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity this evening to discuss with you the corrective action plan based on the New York State Office of State Comptroller's Fuel Accountability Report. Um, I don't have anything to present at this time, because it is a corrective action plan, and all of the information is contained therein, so that will be made a public document after the board's decision this evening as to whether or not it will be adopted. But just to give you a little background on what transpired with regards to this audit by the New York State Comptroller's team, they came on site in November of two thousand fourteen, November sixth to be exact, and they stayed with us until late February, early March. They were here almost every single day, um, and they ran an audit period from July first two thousand thirteen through that November sixth two thousand fourteen date. So the scope of the work initially was related to the financial management and oversight of the district, and they didn't find anything. And I was really upset when we had this meeting with the team in July, and I said, "How come you don't issue a report that says you didn't find anything? You only issue a report when you find items." And they kind of giggled and laughed, and I didn't giggle and laugh, I didn't find it funny. I wanted a report that said, "Good job, thank you for doing a good job, and let's move forward." However, when we did have a meeting with them in mid-May, it was a preliminary meeting between the supervisor of transportation, the director of facilities and operations, and myself, they addressed a few items with us for discussion, and we went back and did our homework. So this corrective action plan really started, started to take hold in May, when these items were brought to our attention. This was before we even did a fuel conversion, um, software, a software conversion, sorry, that occurred in June. It was planned, it was, it was on the table, ready to go, but it was really, um, the timing was, was good with regard to the transition that would be occurring in Transportation Department. So what will happen now is per protocol, the Board of Education has been given the corrective action plan. We have thirty days from the date of the release of the report, which was August twenty-eighth, to submit this to the New York State Comptroller's Office. So that is why it's with the board this evening, and really it's with the board so that discussion can be had as need be. It gives us the opportunity, if the board had any issues or concerns, for us to make any necessary changes to the report. It's really not rushing it, it's really not trying to get it done quickly, it's giving us the opportunity to plan properly and make sure that we have met our obligations with regards to the recommendations made in this report. So there are ten items, ten recommendations that the audit team from New York State did find, and we'll go over each of them briefly. The first one was that there, it's basically directed at the Board of Education and says, "You know what? There's not a reconciliation done of fuel purchased, fuel used, or fuel inventory. Not, all those pieces are done individually by departments, but there's nothing that puts it all together." So what we have done is, on page two.
Page twelve. Oh, okay.
Sorry, page two, well, it's the original.
Right. And if you go to page twelve.
Of the actual document. I was in the corrective action plan, I'm sorry.
Got you. Got you.
Okay. So what we've done is combined this process. So individually, we'll all still do our parts, but we're asking the claims auditor to include a reconciliation of the fuel purchased, used, and then the inventory at the end, just to ensure that everything is on board. It'll often be given to the board on a monthly basis as part of your financial statement packet that you already get from, from the business office. All right, and that will start in July of two thousand fifteen, just so we know our implementation dates moving forward. Uh, recommendation two, yes? Well, we have not done the July financial statements to the board yet, that's what I was wanting. We've already done the reconciliation for July, Mr. Rubin, so you're correct. We just haven't provided it to you because there's a timing with the audit, um, the external audit, not to be confused with this audit. Um, the next recommendation is related to facilities and operations and variances that may be cited in the, in the transactions. And this was a specific item that they brought to our attention, um, was related to a vehicle that had fuel logged for more gallons than they actually had the capacity for. And come to find out, it was because this vehicle, the employee using the vehicle was also having a rototiller and a snow blower, so they would be filling that, those items up as well. So there was a miscommunication with us getting that information to the state, that's the item that really, I addressed that, asked the superintendent to really address that in the response directly to the state, because we asked that to be removed, we showed the removal documentation, and, uh, they did not remove it. But they also didn't dispute it in the report, so that's a positive thing. But there were transactions that included, the times were varying, various times with regard to the fuel being pumped, there was, um, odometer readings that went backwards, and that was a system called Gasboy. And Gasboy was a system we no longer use, that ended June thirty of two thousand fifteen. That was not an interactive software like Fuel Master that we have now. With regard to that one vehicle that I had mentioned, um, Mr. Gross did do an investigation to ensure that there was no issues with that vehicle and that it was truly for those fill-ups. We could tell by the amount of, um, fuel that they were logging to ensure that there wasn't, it wasn't any personal use or any log was involved. Sorry? Okay, so that, in mid-July, um, that recommendation had been taken care of, we had reviewed everything and felt that we were sure that that recommendation in particular was being taken care of. The new system that we have is Fuel Master. Fuel Master is, uh, internet-based, so we won't have any issues with a server going down and the time not being logged correctly, because that's what was a lot of the issues, was that the server would go down, it would say one o'clock in the morning, and it really wasn't one o'clock in the morning, the server had just went down, um, with regard to logging the time. The information was still logged correctly, because it logged directly into a computer, it just didn't upload to the server, um, until the server came back on. It's done daily. There was a recommendation with regard to gates being located around a tank. Um, again, this was directed at facilities and operations. We have a problem in that, not a problem, we have an agreement with several local agencies to utilize our fuel tanks, so to lock that, that area would not necessarily be something that is, um, that would safeguard the area. It could still be left open by somebody. Uh, we will be putting surveillance cameras there as well to safeguard that, but with the new system, again, we have a different key system and a different identification system that provides us with much more information in reporting, uh, so that we're very, we are comfortable with that recommendation as well. Um, number four, and this one will be shared again in the Transportation Department, is related to a monthly review of the fuel transactions for each department. And that has started, that started back in May, actually. As soon as we had that meeting in May, we started this conversation. Um, these fuel transactions are reviewed on a monthly basis. They will be signed off, given to me, and I will be the one responsible for making sure that this information is logged, um, and it is kept on file by the business office. And we have a timeline, it's described in the corrective action as to when the reports will be out to the supervisors, when they'll be back into the business office for long. Uh, there is one additional facilities and operations related to diesel fuel tanks. Currently, there's discussion as to whether or not that tank will even continue to exist. So if that tank continues to exist, we will be installing a gauge and a pump, Mr. Gross informed me, that we will then be performing the same reconciliation that we spoke of earlier on that diesel fuel tank. So we're very, um, again, that, uh, that tank is, um, RCK annex, correct, Mr. Gross? RCK annex?
Yeah.
Yes. Two hundred and fifty gallon tank. So we'll be providing that recommendation if that tank does continue to exist, um, into the future. And it'll be subject to the same review. Um, there was, I, I, I told you, there's one extra facilities and operations, and it's who can order fuel. And the fuel will only be ordered by the director of facilities operations, um, the purchasing agent, the shop foreman, the supervisor of transportation, it'll be very limited as to who can order fuel, and currently, there's It'll be very limited as to who can order fuel, and currently, those would be the only people who were ordering fuel, but the process will be written in stone, we shared it with the vendors back in July, that those are the only individuals that they can take fuel orders from, and that solidifies the whole process that will be going through the reconciliation monthly as well. Recommendation seven, was that the reports need to be generated, that we spoke of. We are working with Fuel Master, the new program right now, in order to ensure that these reports meet the needs of each of the departments, as well as meeting the needs for the reconciliation. We're finding great success with that, so we're very happy about that as well. There is a recommendation about a list of fuel keys and vehicle numbers. Again, this system is much more integrative in that real-time changes are made, so if a run is changing, a bus driver ends up being put on a different vehicle because of prevent and maiden, maiden, excuse me, that's automatically logged into the system. So they go with bus number 862, they put that in, it will not allow an odometer reader that's reading that goes backwards, it knows how many miles was on 862 when it was last logged. It's really a much more integrative system. There was a review of the transactions that were provided to the Office of the State Controller, and we're talking thousands and thousands of transactions. We sorted them, we did the same review that the Controllers' Office did because we answered all of their questions. So that's where we feel that these recommendations that we're making and the implementation plans that we have are really secure, and that there has not been any type of activity that would lead us to question what has occurred in the past, in the past during this audit period. Recommendation number nine, again, is about the Fuel Master keys. There used to be quite a few Fuel Master keys because Gasboy would not allow a quick transition for Fuel Master keys. We will only have three, and a master is one that can override. There will only be three keys, and they will be kept safe, one for the Wapentures Junior High Transportation, one for Fishville Plains Transportation, and one for Facilities and Operations, and they will be kept safeguarded in a locked safe. Those are emergency keys, in case of, again, in case of an emergency, but we do, we'll limit those to only three. And as I indicated earlier, Transportation has the same requirement to review the transactions monthly and sign off, but we also have vehicles in other departments, that we will be having those departments which are not cited in the report, but that we addressed as a district and felt that it's important that we move forward with these. It is very important to us to make sure that we monitor these situations and these recommendations because, again, we are very proud to go through an audit process and not have any internal controls district-wide. If you ever have an opportunity and sometime on a Saturday afternoon and you want to go to the State Controllers' website, you can read quite a few audit reports. In addition to financial management and oversight and being areas of audit, they've also audited fund balance, they've audited extracurricular activities, they've audited inventory accountability. We're not the only district to have had this type of audit, and they're really, while not an uplifting read, they are interesting in that it allows you to see that the larger the district gets, there's problems. The smaller the districts are, there's problems. And really, we are seeing this as an opportunity to grow and strengthen our internal controls and just become stronger as a department and a district. Thank you.
I just thank you so much, President, on what our business managers just indicated as well. When we first met with the Controllers, the audit team in November, yes, it was early November, it was an extensive meeting of what they would be doing, what they would be carrying out, and their exit meeting did not last more than five minutes, which they were really impressed. They said, "We've never done this, we've never sat," but they schooled the district and concluded a meeting so quickly because the work was done. We were working simultaneously, looking at these issues, and as, I try to work and say that for one of the recommendations to really, to really remove it, and they said, "Well, no, because we really went through the process." Had we known the information prior to creating the report, we would be removing it, and more or less, as I said, the meeting did not last more than five minutes, and that's a really good sign, so thank you.
I think, I think Mrs. Crandall should be commended for having such a wonderful response from the state, how well they did that. And actually, if there were absolutely nothing, it would suggest perhaps the audit, the audit people were not really doing their job, because their job is to see if there are little things that you should correct so that problems don't arise. And although they didn't find any cause for waste or theft, we want to put in all the safeguards we can so that they don't appear in the future, because that's, that's how we avoid having problems that any, any organization can be susceptible to if they don't do all the little, the little regulations and the ways of preventing these things from happening and the safeguards and counterchecks. So thank you very much, Mrs. Crandall.
If I could just add one more thing, this audit team was headed by the same lead auditor from back in 2004/5.
Yes.
And that was her first audit in 2004/5. So this year, November, she brought in a new auditor as well, and she told us at the exit interview that she looked harder and deeper because she wanted to teach him how to look harder and deeper. And that, she's like, "I just kept digging."
That's right.
"I just kept digging." And she was, again, while cumbersome and tiresome, we're really thankful for the process because we have this new system, we really want to make sure it works, it gave us an opportunity to see things that we were a little weak in our internal controls before, and we're able to move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Rubin.
I'm not sure whether I should be wrapping this question to Mrs. Crandall or to Mr. Carrion, but this precedes your meeting with the district, because three years ago, when I came onto this board, actually, it's over three years ago, but I believe this was three years ago or so, I had asked a question about power fuel dispensing and other organizations using, coming by and filling up their, their tanks from our fuel inventory, and my question was, my concern was that we didn't have any type of resale certificate at that time, and my recollections are, is that we discontinued recently, gas, diesel, oil, two, I think there was a fire department nearby, I'm not sure if there were any at once. That was, we understand, that was the premise that I've been going under over these past few years, so I'm kind of taking back a little bit, I can't figure it out, but I'm taking back a little bit, on that we're selling, I guess, gas from other agencies.
What?
No, that's okay. Just as an explanation.
Well, we did cease and desist until we had agreements. We do have agreements in place, we have resale certificates, we do charge back to these, to these organizations on a quarterly basis. We do not have as many as we did in the past, we have two, and that's the type of activity that we have. It's not, and they have their own key, they have a reconciliation, they, they, again, they are provided with a record and they verify their, their, their usage, and we have had no issues. Again, the funny times may have been the fire department coming at 2:00 in the morning after a fire, we'd need to throw the fire truck. Some of those times were actually legitimate, and the server was not down.
No, but we do have, we have our necessary resale certificates, et cetera, et cetera.
Absolutely, so. Absolutely. We're not selling at a profit, we're selling at what we purchased it for on that day, so it is, that's how we handle that situation.
Understood.
We checked it with the attorneys, made sure we're all on board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Resolve that the Board of Education-
Addendum.
Does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated. 7.02-
And addendum.
7.03-
And addendum.
7.04, 7.05, 7.06-
And addendum.
7.07 and 7.08.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Rubin. We have a second. Mrs. Karab. All in favor? Five in favor. So that's everyone here. Thank you. All right. Dr. Baum, would you please step forward? Thank you.
First, I would like to recognize Ms. Megan Dalasano, who will be starting as the Assistant Principal at Van Wyck Junior High School. Back there, new physical education.
Old Business?
Old Business.
8.01, amend the motion to table the approval of the NISBA Policy Services Contract. Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby amend the motion to table the approval of the NISBA Policy Services Contract, which was originally tabled until the next Policy Committee meeting, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education does hereby amend that motion to be taken from the table as stated in Resolution 8.02.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Mr. Selma, a second. Mr. Rubin, discussion?
Could somebody clarify this one?
Yeah, I'm lost on this one.
All right. All right, the, all right, this is about the approval of the NISBA Policy Services Contract, which we discussed before, and we had tabled it from the agenda at a previous meeting because the Policy Committee was looking for more information about it and had decided they couldn't make a recommendation one way or the other until they got information about how much money we had expended on this to our attorneys, and whether this was something that we really needed, or whether it was something that could be done just with the attorneys and with the Policy Committee. And after further research, the Policy Committee members decided that, yes, they could, they did all feel that this was something that they could approve, although they hadn't had a meeting, but that, holding all the members of the committee, they felt they could now approve it and recommend that it be approved, and therefore, they suggested that we take it off the table and the Board deal with it. That wasn't, it wasn't a formal committee decision, but since the Board was the one who tabled it in the first place, the Board can take it off the table if they want to this meeting, or they can decide not to table it off and wait until after the Policy Committee meeting. Yes?
So by approving this, we're taking this off of the table, and then we'll vote separately on 8.02?
Yes, exactly. So it doesn't have to be, it doesn't, it can be voted on or not, but the decision on whether or not to do it is a second, a second one is 8.02 as opposed to 8.01. All right?
8.01 is we tabled it until after the Policy Committee, and we're amending that to say we're tabling it until we decide to take it off the table, and we're taking it off the table. That is what we're doing.
All right, thank you for asking for that clarification, I think it helps everybody. All right, is there any further discussion on whether or not we should vote for the removing it from the table? All right? All in favor of removing it from the table? All right, five.
8.02, approval of NISBA Policy Services Contract. Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the agreement between the New York State School Board Association and the district to develop an essential policy manual, placing the completed policy manual on the Internet in electronic format and providing the district with a policy update subscription service at a cost of $9,500, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education does hereby authorize the Superintendent of Schools to sign said agreement as stated.
Both motion? Mr. Rubin, second. Mrs. Karab, discussion?
What is the current agreement that we have in place? Is it, is this a simple extension of what we have been asking them to do on an annual basis, on month-to-month basis? How does this differ, if any, in any way?
Okay, they have been, we have been subscribing to quarterly updates. This has been quite a long time that this has been going on. They did help us with our policy manual many years ago, but it's been a long time since they've done it all the whole. What this would mean would be they would go through the entire policy book and see which things maybe are redundant, which things we need to look at and make decisions ourselves on changing, which things need updating, and as some people have pointed out at public meetings, there are a lot of things in our policy manual that are perhaps out of date or we're not following, and we need to, they would help us do this and get it in order. The Policy Committee itself has been trying, but it's a huge manual, those of you who follow it on the website, and they have not been able to make, catch up at the speed at which changes take place. That's, as I understand it, I was not on the Policy Committee last year, so perhaps someone who was could speak to that, Mrs. Hardeman.
You've characterized that very well. We attempted to start at the 4,000 section, which is where it had been left off a couple of years previously. We got through maybe, I wouldn't say a tenth, but I'll, I'll be- I think somewhere around, between a tenth and a fifth of the 4,000 section, just the 4,000 section last year. It is very cumbersome to go through the policies piece by piece, and it just, we have policies in there that have not been updated since the 90s, and so it really is time for us to get through the whole policy manual, make sure it's up to date. And our assessment section was still pre-2005 standards at one point, I think we've gotten that up to date, but there are just a lot of policies through there that have become outdated and really need to be brought up to date and brought into compliance. We've tried to maintain with the updates that we get from NISBA, we go through those and put those in, but there are things that change along the way, or the way that the district operates changes, and we need to make sure that we're in compliance with our own policy manual.
Anybody else? Further discussion?
So it seems that it's easier to have an outside entity take a comprehensive look because of the cumbersome of it, the size of it, and, and having us do it on, at a committee level, maybe it's time. It's not like we would be spending this amount of money every year, so this would, would pretty much bring everything up to speed for it. Right?
Mr. Rubin.
And it would also bring it in compliance, not compliance, but it would be in line with NISBA, so we would have the top state people telling us, "These are the right policies."
I understand it's an 18-months process, and this does not mean that NISBA would be writing all our policies, because they would be bringing to our attention things that we need to look at, and so if we had, we had things that we thought we should do other than their recommendations, they would give us assistance on it and work with us. Yes. Mr. Carrion.
You took the words right out of my mouth, President. I don't think that this really eliminates the Policy Committee, but it gives the Policy Committee members a fair opportunity to look at policy and to determine policy, how we want policy for the Wapentures Central School District. But if we're working with antiquated policies, with laws that may be outdated, then that's additional work that- that's additional work that, um, respectfully saying, um, I don't think we're equipped to figure out what has been outdated to a certain degree so that the policy committee can work constructively to determine policy that defines and is aligned to the culture of what we want for our district.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, are we ready to take a vote? All right, uh, perhaps we'd better read that again.
Approval of NISBA Policy Services Contract, resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the agreement between the New York State School Board Association and the District to develop an essential policy manual, placing the completed policy manual on the internet in electronic format, and providing the District with a policy update subscription service at a cost of nine thousand five hundred dollars, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education does hereby authorize the superintendent of schools to sign said agreement as stated.
Okay, all in favor? Five. Okay.
Nine point oh one, approval of corrective action plan. Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the corrective action plan in response to the State Comptroller's Fuel Accountability Report of Examination, as indicated in a memo dated August twenty eighth, two, twenty fifteen, the supporting documentation from the school business manager to the superintendent of schools.
Okay, do we have a motion? Mr. Rubin, second. Mr. Selma, discussion? Mr. Rubin?
Could this wait till the next board meeting, when more members will be here? This is a very, uh, central urgent, I, I don't mean urgent, but it's a very important matter, and if it can wait till the next board meeting so that more of us could be here to place the vote, I think that would be a good thing. Can it wait?
Um, Mr. Carrion?
It can, as our business manager indicated, um, and I, I don't mean any disrespect when I say this, but if there's five people at the next board meeting, we would have to vote. So if it's just about tabling for additional members to be sitting at the table, um, we can hold the meeting once we have a quorum. So therefore, um, it is the will of the board, and we can't wait. We have a month.
Okay, any other comments? Mrs. Hardiman?
I would just like to continue the discussion so that we can raise any questions or issues to give, um, Ms. Crandall and anyone else involved some time to, um, investigate that information.
Did you have some, okay, while you're looking, Mr. Rubin, did you have some specific questions?
This is the first time that I'm real, that I'm seeing this, maybe it just didn't come up on my home, maybe it just didn't come up on my home computer, this is the first time that I'm seeing this. I appreciate the, uh, explanation that we've had, I have full faith in that. Uh, if we can wait, I'd like to give myself a, a few extra days to look through this. But if we can't wait, I'd be willing to go with it, but, and I also think it's important that more board members be here for this.
All right. And then, Mr., Mr. Selma, did you have any comments while we were here?
I think we should wait, this will be an opportunity for all board members to, like, participate in the discussion. I think we should wait because, uh, we'll get our people and all the board members to have an opportunity to participate in discuss.
Mrs. Hardiman?
If we can just have a couple of clarifications, would be, um, who is authorized to order the fuel and...
Corrective action recommendation, it gives you the title of staff...
That's...
Yes, I can tell you, you can give me just one moment.
I was looking for the, but I'm...
It's in the actual write-up itself, um, and it is on page five of the corrective action memo. It tells you, um, for both facilities where there are tanks, and also for facilities where there are tanks, under recommendation six. Last... We also kept that big because people do change, so we just wanted to make sure it was tight. But the vendor had need for the minutes there.
Okay, okay, that makes it clear.
Any other comments? Did, did, yes, do we have a motion from Mr. Rubin to table this?
Yes, I will. Um, I would like, as long as we have the time, which we've been told, I'd like to make the recommendation, a motion, that is, that this be tabled to be voted upon at the next board meeting.
Okay, second? Mr. Selma, seconded. Okay, all those in favor of tabling? Okay, five. Thank you. All right, number ten, additions to the agenda, approval of public role on board committees.
Resolve that the Board of Education of Wapanger School District, Central School District does hereby recognize the importance of the input of the various segments of the community towards the successful completion of the mission of the district, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education of Wapanger Central School District does hereby recognize that the input of each of these community segments must, by necessity, operate within normal constraints and expectations in order to be successful, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapanger Central School District does hereby recognize that only trustees are elected by and responsible to the public for the purpose of making and implementing policy, and that said trustees are the only ones responsible to the public for the ultimate success or failure of the district. Therefore, the Board of Education of the Wapanger Central School District does hereby resolve, from this time forward, only trustees be allowed to pass votes during any committee proceeding. Passage of this resolution will immediately supersede any policy or previous board votes to the contrary, and therefore be it further resolved that the Board of Education and of the Wapanger Central School District does hereby recognize and value the importance of public input, and that public members of a committee must, by necessity, only advise a committee and not be allowed to pass a vote on any proceeding or question before a committee.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Rubin, do we have a second? Mr. Selma, discussion? Mrs. Karab?
I think I understand what, um, the resolution is, is indicating as far as committee structure and the, um, the deliberations that take place in a committee, at the committee level. I thought perhaps we might want to, as part of the policy, um, manual being analyzed, or an analysis being taken on the policy manual by NISBA, to have discussions where it pertains to those particular sections of the policy manual, about the viability of citizens advisory councils or committees, which are councils or committees that are totally made up of, by the public, and that we might want to revisit how we would involve citizen advisory committees at a future date, reports that come out of citizens advisory committees, and, and make it, uh, make it available for future discussion that we, we could always, um, you know, have, uh, take action in that direction. This is, from what I understand, Madam Chair, this is for committee structure, for our standing committees, for any committees that in the future we deem that are important. It also could be possible for different subjects, that a citizens advisory group would meet on their own and, uh, report to the board on their findings, um, but I'm not an expert in it, and I'm just offering this as part of the discussion that, you know, we still perhaps leave that open, uh, to talk to NISBA about, and how that could be useful, useful to it.
Anyone else? Mr. Rubin?
Thank you. Uh, right now, there is one standing committee that has, uh, public members on it that, according to our lawyers, can, once they're sworn in, vote, and be brought into any executive session that the committee, uh, the committee goes into, that's the audit committee, that those voting members, those public members have the, would, would then subsequently, at this point, have the same, their vote would have the same weight as any trustee member to the, uh, to that audit committee. Well, public input is welcome and sought and valued. The fact is that those public members are not elected by the, anybody in the district, they're not responsible to the electorate, only the trustees are. So the, if a decision is voted upon by the audit committee that, uh, could have a negative impact on the district, those public members are not responsible to anybody in the board. Purpose of this was just to recognize the value of the citizens, but that the citizens should continue to provide an advisory council to the, uh, an advisory...
Capacitor.
Capacitor, thank you, to the audit committee, but the ultimate vote of anything that the audit committee does, just like any other committee, would be by the trustees on that committee. And right now, that's not so, and those public members do not have an answer to any of the electorate, only the trustees do.
Uh, Mr. Rubin, for clarification, uh, are we talking mainly about the audit committee? I had understood the resolution was referring to all committees.
I made a broad, but, uh, it was based upon my experience with the audit committee, and it was just recently brought to my attention, uh, thank you, that, uh, that there is a charter to that committee, which I did not know, I didn't know when I was there under Mrs. Crandall, and that the charter, the charter to that committee requires that the citizens have a full and equal vote. So I'm talking about the audit committee, I'm not sure that there are other state committees where citizens have a right to vote.
Um, is there any other comments or questions? Mrs. Hardiman?
Has this, um, resolution been broad before our attorneys? And I'm wondering if we need to then, and I don't know which, if the chicken or which is the egg here, the charter for the audit committee needs to be then revised, and I guess this one first and then the charter? So I have two questions, though.
Well, if I...
See?
Okay, the charter would obviously need to be revised if this is approved, but, uh, we could also talk about if it's the will of this board to approve this, that this would be approved in addition on, um, the lawyers looking at it and giving their, uh, okay group.
I think I'd prefer to have the attorneys look at it, and then, I mean, if we could table it, and perhaps also, um, I, I'm not sure, I understand the purpose for the audit committee, and so I'm thinking that perhaps we should look at revising the charter for the audit committee, rather than having such a sweeping, um, resolution, and, so, I'm, I'm not sure, that's my...
Problem is, it, it becomes a question of time, because at the next audit committee meeting, which I'm not, I don't recall the exact date, do you recall? The sixteenth of September, okay, okay. If, if this does not go through, and it was only recently brought to our attention about this, if this does not go through, then those public members will then be sworn in, and they will take an oath of office, just like you and I did, and anything that we talk about, whether it's in a, uh, executive session or in public, they'll be privy to it, once they get sworn into office. And, uh, excuse me, just to go back, no, um, as far as I know, unless, unless, uh, Mr. Carrion, Madam President, goes, talk with the lawyer, I mean, as important as I did not, I don't have the liberty to talk with the lawyer, so I didn't talk.
Uh, Mr. Rubin, another point of clarification, are you concerned about, um, these members, how the public members being privy to private, uh, to the information, or just to them voting? Because as I understand it, and maybe I'm wrong in the case of the audit committee, but as I understood it, any committee, uh, is only offering recommendations to the board, and the board makes the decisions, so, uh, whether a, uh, whatever committee, I mean, I, my experience, I've only been on the board a year before this, and I served on the audit committee, and on the District Facilities Advisory Committee, and on the Capital Improvement Committee, and I don't know about the other committees from personal experience, but it seemed to me that the public members, uh, were very helpful and constructive for the most part in their suggestions, and, uh, when we had votes, um, at most of those committees, uh, they, it was, uh, pretty much in agreement, but whatever was recommended by the committee went to the board for decision, since neither the trustees nor the public members, when serving on a committee, are setting policy, they're merely making recommendations. And although citizen advisory committees are, I've served on them, and I think they're good, on the other hand, they're separate from the board, and I personally, as a board member, like interacting with public member, with the public members, and hearing what people think as we're going along, so it isn't, you know, like something they're presenting later, but we're constantly in contact and hearing what, what they have to say and getting their input, that's, uh, but, you know, if there is some sort of problem with the audit committee, I, you know, I was wondering, yes.
The audit committee may be a little bit different. Uh, the, the audit committee, from time to time, gets information that the board, that we need to review first and then present to the board or the board to take action, that type of information, from time to time, could be confidential, uh, whereas the District Advisory Facilities Committee, I do not think had anything confidential, I don't think the Capital Improvement Committee had anything confidential, but from time to time, we could be seeing sensitive material, material that, in my opinion, that, um, may not, is not ready yet for the public to see, and it's not right for the public to see something that's of confidential nature prior to the board's...
Well, uh, from personal experience, the District Advisory Committee did see confidential information that were, uh, suggested maps that were not, um, were definitely not just possibilities, and were certainly not, uh, not considered what we were going to be doing, and the information was spread around, uh, and perhaps misinterpreted as, you know, something that we were actually doing, because there were many different possibilities, and Mrs. Catalano presented possibilities to us, and, uh, they were distributed. So that, I think that's a problem with any committee, but on the other hand, um, I'm concerned about us throwing the baby out with the bathwater, uh-huh, and losing the contact with the, the feedback from the pub, uh, from members of the public. Uh, perhaps what we need to do is strengthen, uh, the understanding of committee members of the confidentiality.
What do you see in here that prohibits the public from making comments and observations? You said you're a...
No, I, I'm sure they do, they come to the meetings.
You, you said in here that you believe that this would somehow limit their, uh, ability to make a statement about something, and I'd like to know what you thought about here.
No, I don't mean that they would be limited, of course, they can always come to public meetings, send emails, and, uh, telephone us, and we welcome that input, but on the other hand, if they're part of a committee, then as the committee works, we're getting feedback right along.
Where do you see in here that they're not entitled to make that statement to the committee?
I'm not saying that, Mr. Rubin, I'm just saying that I had some concern about the sweeping nature of this resolution, and I'm wondering whether the problems that you have a, are concerned about with the audit committee, which may, you know, may be, uh, may be true, I don't know in detail, uh, but perhaps that's something to look at the charter of that committee, take it to our attorney, and see if we need to revise the charter for that particular committee, or whether we do or we don't. that particular committee, or whether we do or we don't, I don't know, it just seems to me that perhaps this is a rather draconian approach to a problem, and perhaps we could find something somewhere in between, that's just my opinion. Any other comments or considerations? Mr. Carrion, do you have any, any feedback that you could give us on these...
I shared, I shared with the board on my weekly demo, my thoughts regarding this matter, you brought up the district advisory facilities committee, I don't remember anybody being sworn in, I do remember, once the meeting was over, Dr. Bock and I can attest, that the information got out to everybody. As far as that, I can tell you that it really created for not what's considered to be transparency. I think we need to have a conversation between the difference of transparency and scrutiny and privacy, when it requires to be private information. Those things are three different items, three different things that we really need to be conscious of, and so, the whole, my take has always been that we want to talk about being transparent, and I think that we need to be transparent, so the conversations that we want, we want the public to be involved in our conversations, to be involved in our committees and take part of different activities and events, will really raise the level of engagement and parental involvement that we really want to see in the community. In addition to that, there, I'm not, I'm not very familiar with the charter of the audit committee and understanding about being sworn in, and that then the committee members can be part of an executive session, so those concerns really should be taken up with our lawyers, so that we can really figure out if there's, I'm not sure, I'm just bringing that point up.
I'm looking for the charter, I would like to...
All right, and there's just one more thing in my name, and I did mention this as well, that committee members are, are here to provide counsel, advice, and in some committees, they, they may work in a fashion where people take votes, and the majority wins, it could be consensus reaching, it could be just providing input and recommendation, and you want to caution that a committee acts as a committee and not a sub-board, so if there is a concern about having what would be considered to be somewhat of a sub-board of education, then I would say that that conversation should really be held in until the lawyers speak. But as I see it, is that you listen to what the committee members have to say, and sometimes you agree to disagree, and you hear from a diverse group of people that provide different lenses, that provide insight from other perspectives, so that the board, based on whether the committee has a consensus-reaching process or voting process, the board can hear from, that those committees, that, those board members that represent those committees, so that they can make a sound decision and vote ultimately on whatever it is that the board of education has to vote on.
Mr. Rubin.
With, with that, with that being said, that there's not, that we're looking for legal tidings on this, I'd like to make a motion that this be tabled, pending a review by council, and that if, that I'd like to, I'd like to meet with the council to just express my opinion of where I'm coming from on that, and then let's see what their recommendations are, hopefully before the end of the next board meeting, but I'd like to make a motion that this be tabled, pending review by council, and that I'd like to be a part of that conversation with council.
Second, I, yes, my...
Could, could we broaden that to also have council look into what you're calling a charter for the audit committee, which, in my mind, sounds more like there's, there's language in the bylaws that, that are operating bylaws when it comes to the audit committee, there's a more in-depth description of how that committee is assembled and the description of how the public interacts on that committee, and you could bring that before them as well?
Absolutely, and Alberta, actually, Alberta, maybe you can make a copy of this for everybody, if you don't already have it. Alberta made a copy for us, I got it a few days ago, of the audit committee charter.
Okay.
Do we have, we have a motion on the floor to table this, or do we have a second? Mr. Soma, a second. Any further discussion of tabling? All in favor of tabling? Five zero.
And that's including the expanded version, correct?
Yeah, this was everything that she had given.
Thank you. Eleven point zero one, request for additions to the agenda.
Can I just ask a question before we move on, please? Mr. Rubin, was that charter re, I don't know the correct language, re-approved for this year, or did it just come forward from last year?
I think, I think it just came forward, because we, I don't recall ever talking, ever talking about a charter for the audit committee, so I don't know what the...
I, I recall talking about it in the past, at least...
It was on our, it was on our July meeting agenda for a discussion in September, so it was an agenda item for discussion going forward, and that's what prompted this...
But I mean, in years past, I don't recall that.
I, I don't remember that.
I, I recall it coming forward at least once in my time on board, so.
I don't have the best memory, so.
All right, okay, are there any additions to the agenda? Mr. Rubin.
Thank you. Again, maybe I don't remember this, other board members do, but policy number thirty-one hundred, Bill Better, policy number thirty-one hundred has a, part of the responsibility of the superintendent, is to provide, I'm sorry, I'm not going to verbatim now, but I believe that this was, that there's an annual report giving us the status of the district, and where we're headed, where we're probably are headed, I'd like to ask the superintendent that, in terms of providing us with a report under this policy thirty-one hundred, that whenever that report is given, that part of it, so that we don't go through the same castles that we've done, being surprised about development coming up, the Duchess County, Duchess County government has on their website a report, and I have that.
Excuse me, Mr. Rubin, but could you state it more as to an item in the agenda before we discuss it?
Giving us a report as per, as per policy number thirty-one hundred about the, the status of the district, the state of the district, and to include upon that, using information that the Duchess County government has on their website, approve housing developments within our district and the impact that we perceive that having in the future.
All right, do we have a motion to amend the agenda to, to discuss this matter? Mr. Soma, that's the motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Karat, all right, all those in favor of discussing this issue?
No.
We have to vote on discuss, on amending the agenda to discuss it before we can discuss it, because it wasn't on the printed agenda, that was, that was publicized to the public, and anything that's added that the public didn't see, we have to have a majority by, by majority of the total board in order to add something to the agenda, all right? Okay, all those in favor of adding this to the agenda? Three in favor, those opposed? Two opposed, all right, and it will not be discussed at this meeting.
I would welcome it being added to a future agenda.
Yes, I would too, when we've all had time to consider it and think about it and...
And that our colleagues will be aware of it.
Right, and the public, so that you know it's, okay? All right, we're just trying to avoid surprises. All right, now, we have, are there any other motions to add, anything to the agenda? All right, then we have time now for more comments from the public, again, and we have thirty minutes allotted to this, and this time, it does not have to relate to an item on the agenda, but please state your full name and what you're talking about, and please keep your comments to three minutes, so that everybody has an opportunity to speak who would like to do so. Would anyone like to speak now?
Ed Slowsho, in town of East Fifth Door. Recently, an article was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal titled, "Majority of Hudson Valley Students Unprepared for College." This article was posted and then removed from the district's new Facebook page. If the forty-seven percent number is true, that statistic is frightening. If comments made by Duchess Community College are also true, that most graduating students that enroll have to take remedial classes because they are unprepared, then we, the community, would like to know what are you going to do to make our children at college ready? When are we going to finally have a conversation about what is going on in our classrooms and in our schools? When will we work together to ensure that all of our students are succeeding? When will we offer our students a chance to participate in activities that will challenge them academically? I am tired of hearing from administration that our brave children will be fine, it is not enough to be fine, they must be encouraged, challenged, and given the right to question their teachers every day. Reading one book for the year with no class discussion, or reading excerpts from books, or watching movies as a replacement for reading, is not going to help students succeed in life. As George Carlin once said, "Don't just teach your children to read, teach them to question what they read, teach them to question everything." This article states that the Walthamshire Central School District is the lowest spender for pupil in Duchess County. With an almost estimated $220 million school budget, I would like to know, where is the money actually going, since it is clearly not going to the students? Madam President, you were quoted as saying, "Our goal is to stay within the tax cap and make sure spending is directed toward student achievement, academics, and extracurricular. Staff is focused on finding areas where they can save us money." I must respectfully disagree with this statement. Where is the high student achievement? Where are we raising the bar, and when are we going to raise the bar? Where are the extracurricular and enrichment activities, and why are parents supplying classrooms with needed supplies? Last year, when Ms. Warden presented the four test scores of the district at a board meeting, she stated that we, being the administration, were looking into the cause of the low scores and how the district could correct this problem. Where is the report, and what has been done to rectify this problem? Once again, this article confirms my prior comments, that many students in this district are unprepared for the challenges of college and life, many are not even prepared to move up to the next grade level. When will we finally admit that there is a serious problem in our schools and make a concerted effort as a community to ensure that our children not only get what they need, but what they deserve? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Cheryl Niget, I live in town of Poughkeepsie, and I have a question, I've been noticing that over the past two months, it seems that frequently the board is working, and the administration are working on things right up until board meetings, and so, I've noticed that there are a series of agenda that are added to the, the agenda after the close of business of the day of the board meeting, and often there isn't full information for the public to really know what's going on. For example, I just noticed a couple of minutes ago, checking tonight's agenda online, that one of the consent agenda items was the approval of the job description for the executive director for finance and business development, but yet there is no copy of what that job description is, and I'm wondering, is this, through the redistricting, a change in position for Ms. Crandall, or someone that is going forward? Is this a new position that is being created? Are there any additional monies from past budgets that are going toward this position? And when are we going to find out that information? Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Carrion and board members, as Cheryl just stated, I don't come to all of the, not as loyal to Ed and Cheryl, but we all do try to pay attention to, I guess, for us personally, that, take it by ear more, something we'd be touching about, so, I watched everyone last year sit here and argue over $5,000 for a transition person, when we rushed this for this year, to kind of putting it off for next year, but after we blundered it all, and kind of made it a bigger mess than it could have ever been, I couldn't believe I was hearing kids from one school are moving to another school two weeks before school starts, but we'll spend $109,000, and nobody knew about it, from August meeting, while we were all home, because we thought nothing was happening, it was going to be so quick, when we could have just invested that money for a handful of it to do the transition properly. With that being said, I have heard through many professionals in the district, that our scholastic funds money has somehow evaporated, we don't have it this year, but we have $109,000 for PR. I'm thinking if we put the money back where they belong, we probably wouldn't need $100 for PR. And, and PR, I just found out that my teachers are, I don't know if this is like in their job description, or from my community project, are, were making fun of our buildings. There's still no mulch, although mulch was being placed today, although, worked out, ninety-five degrees, couldn't go outside because that was the day we took to do mulch. I, I was sitting there all summer in the back of the school, so it's just kind of surprising, if we could kind of make those things work, I think we'd need less money on PR. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, morning, Ryan, and welcome back to school. I just want to piggyback on what Ed was saying about the students' assessments, deficiencies. It was a year ago, I had spoke about the assessment and how poor they were, and it was eight out of ten children were not nearly proficient as a result of the test scores. And I, I did request an urgency issue, be put on top of the board, to find out what we can do to improve testing for our kids. It's a year, nothing's been spoken about, so I'm sitting here, I have trouble listening to $109,000 for PR person, ninety-five hundred on policies that you all know you can follow, and our kids are still losing out, day after day after day. I don't understand this. Where are the kids? Can somebody tell me, where are the kids? They're suffering, and you're bickering about monies, and golly knows where this money is coming from. It's got to be about the kids, it's got to be. This redistricting, the classrooms are larger. Where did anybody gain anything? You spent money, and it wasn't for the kids. I'm sorry, but you got to concentrate on the kids, put a stop to the rest of this nonsense, and teach the kids, please.
Good evening, my name is Angela Yor, and I just want to echo something that was brought up by Ed earlier speaking. This scholastic material is funding, I don't know if the board is familiar with the materials or not, but that actually is something I'm an educator, so I know, it's very really, very helpful in the classroom, and I know a lot of teachers uses it supplemental material. They provide a wealth of knowledge, they're current, they are Common Core aligned, so if that's concerned, that's when you can check off your list. It comes with a whole treasure chest of online resources, and they're technology-ready, it's a, it's a really great resource to have, so if it is true that the funding has somehow evaporated for that, I guess I should look into that, figure out why, and possibly get that back to the teachers, because it really serves the benefit of the kids and the classroom on a regular basis. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public? All right? Then could we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Soma? Or do you want to say something, Mr. Carrion? Oh, okay. Uh, motion to adjourn, Mr. Soma, second. Mr. Rubin, thank you. All those in favor?